A regular city council meeting of August 20th, 2018 to order. We do have a quorum. Let's please stand and pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All individuals asked to either silence or turn off cell phones, pages, or other electronic devices that may disrupt the meeting. Approve the agenda. Approve the agenda as posted in accordance with the open meeting law. Here in place, all agenda items on the table for discussion. What is the wish of the council?
Move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilmember Knopfela, second by Councilmember Ljelgrin, to approve the agenda. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Approval of the minutes. Special work session meeting of August 6th, 2018, and the regular meeting of August 6th, 2018 are enclosed. What is the wish of the council?
Make motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion by Mayor Zilka, second by Councilmember Hanson, to approve the minutes. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Approval of the bills. Checks number 99055 through 99143 totaling $153,437.64. What is the wish of the council?
Make a motion to approve the bills.
Second.
Got a motion by Alderman Hercock, second by Councilmember Lundberg, to approve the bills. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Awards, donations, presentations, and proclamations. We got presentation, Police Department, 2017 annual report. Chief?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This evening included in your packet is the 2017 annual report for the Police Department. Report is intended to give you a general overview of our operations and the different services we provide to the community. The first portion of that report is basically technology and services, and it's a narrative portion of the report. I'll skip forward to page, it's 18 of my report, 31, I believe it's in your report. Basically, we handled 8,700 calls for service in 2017. In the graph there, you can see 2016, we're up slightly from that, and that's been the trend generally. We're handling more calls every year, or more demand for service, which, you know, we can handle those calls. It shows, I think it shows that the community has trust in us, and they're not going to hesitate to call if they need us, so we're there for them. The next page, 19 of the report, is the crime rate. Presently, in 2017, it was 8,493 calls. 2016, we're up dramatically from 2016, but if you look back, I believe it's 2006 to 2012, it's kind of in that range from that time period. It's very similar, so I can't explain why we had a spike, but we did there a little bit. And that number is tabulated by the Part 1 and Part 2 crimes, which are major, more major, serious crimes. So those calls are tabulated. We transmit that data to the state, and then they come back to us with our crime rate. The next graph is our clearance rate, and you'll see that's down to 48 percent this year. Generally, we're always in that 70 to 60 percent range in our clearance rate, and the reason that was, we were not able to transmit that data to the state in time before they tabulated the crime rate. So I called the state. Part of that, I believe, we, only about a third of our data they had received by the time they tabulated that number, so we were not able to get an accurate number, but I did include it from what they had. The reason we had that, that problem, we had a retirement of one of our clerical staff, and we were not able to replace that employee till almost a year later, and we got backlogged with our data. So we did work with the state on that. They were fine, and that should never happen again, but it did skew our number a little bit, so. The next information sheet is basically a comparison of other cities that are similar to Little Falls throughout the state. Basically, I wanted to give you a number or some information that you could reference to other communities, so you could see what it looks like comparatively to Little Falls. So we're kind of, the crime rate is pretty consistent with these other communities, and I just picked them randomly, basically by population throughout the state, so. And then you can see their crime rate and their clearance rates as well. After that is the raw data from our records management system, basically tabulating all the calls for service that we handle throughout the year. I just picked out a few. For example, we had 40 requests for property watches in the community. So folks go on vacation, they stop in and fill out a little sheet, and will check their property while they're gone for them until they return. We had 359 vehicle lockouts that we handled within the community. That's gotten to be pretty popular, because I know it's kind of expensive to have a tow company come and do it, and it's nice PR for us in the community, so hopefully you've never had to use the service.
No, I have. Worked great, thank you.
Good. We assisted the Morrison County Sheriff's Office 248 times. That's only the sheriff's office, that's not other agencies within the state. 818 medicals, and just to give you an example, 143 property damage accidents. That was just property damage, not personal injury, so. Any questions? I know it's a lot of information, and it's a thick report, but any questions on that information?
Any questions for the chief?
I just have a comment that, that ATV on a public street, I think we could, we'd have to get a full-time officer for that, too, because you see a lot of that around, because ATVs are so popular now, and they'll get off the trail, and, you know, to get to that trail, if they're anywhere in town, you know, they've got to go on a city street or a public street.
Right, yeah.
I saw one swinging on Highway 10 not that long ago.
Oh, we don't want them out there.
Standing up by the bowling alley.
Hearing none, what is the wish of the council?
I make a motion to receive the Police Department 2017 annual report.
Second.
Got a motion by Mayor Zilka, second by Councilmember Gushak, to receive the report. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Consent agenda, application to conduct offsite gambling, Little Falls Youth Hockey Raffle, Little Falls Sports Arena, approve. Heritage Preservation Commission minutes, August 2018, receive. Joint Powers Agreement, Fire Protection Camp Ripley Fire Department, approve. Outdoor Event, West Side Bar, September 15th, 2018, approve. Police Department Report, July 2018, receive. Public Works Report, July 2018, receive. Renewal Application, On Sale 2:00 AM Liquor License, West Side Bar, approve. Waste Water Report, July 2018, receive. Water Report, July 2018, receive. What is the wish of the council on the consent?
I make a motion to accept the consent agenda.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilmember Gushak, second by Councilmember Knopfela, to approve the consent. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Public hearings and lettings. First public hearing, Resolution 2018-42, approve Project St. Francis Health Services of Morris, adopt. Laurie?
Yes, this resolution or this public hearing is for the bonds that will be sold by St. Francis Health Services, and I believe there is a representative in the audience. So if you want to come up and explain the program to the council, that would be fine. Thank you.
Good evening, mayor and council. My name is Chris Verda. I'm an attorney, a bond attorney at the Freiberger Law Firm out of Duluth, and the reason for this public hearing is a federal tax requirement, as well as a state procedural law requirement when bonds are issued by another community and the funds are going to be spent in this community. Now, the project at this point in time is actually a project that occurred in 2014, and so St. Francis Health Services and Little Falls Care Center are refinancing debt incurred in 2014, and they're refinancing it on a tax-exempt basis. And to do so, the City of Royalton and the City of Randall have agreed to issue it, issue conduit revenue bonds for this project. And so I'm here this evening to answer any questions that the council may have related to the process.
Mr. President, didn't we, Laurie, haven't we done this before? Didn't we do this in 2014?
Yes, yes, we did.
Or whatever, when they first did the project?
Yes, and this has no effect on the cities. We have no obligation to repay those bonds or any of that kind of stuff. It's just a mechanism that, that they have to go through in order for them to sell the bonds tax-exempt.
So this doesn't affect our bond dollars that we can bond for the year, either?
Correct.
And that's part of the reason why those communities, it was decided that they would be issuing the bonds instead of the City of Little Falls, because in consultation with your bond council, it was determined that bonds had already been issued this year, and that there may be some additional borrowing needs yet this year, that the city wanted to preserve that ability to do so.
Any other questions? Thank you. Open up for public comment. Anyone from the public wish to speak? Anyone from the public wish to speak? Third and final call, anyone from the public wish to speak? Hearing none, 7:41, we'll close the public hearing. What is the wish of the council on Resolution 2018-42?
Mr. President, I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution 2018-42.
I'll second.
Got a motion by Councilmember Hanson, second by Alderman Hercock, to approve Resolution 2018-42. Any discussion? Hearing none, resolution, call a roll, please.
Hercock?
Yes.
Gushak?
Yes.
Lundberg?
Yes.
Zilka?
Yes.
Hanfler?
Yes.
Ljelgrin?
Yes.
Knopfela?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Carries.
Resolution 2018-44, vacate portion of Cherry Avenue and Second Street Southeast, CHI Hospital Expansion. Greg?
Yeah, this evening, the CHI is requesting to vacate Cherry Avenue and a portion of Second Street Southeast. I did put an updated ordinance resolution in front of you this evening, so to give you an idea on where that is exactly at, we are looking at Cherry Avenue, which basically goes from First to Second Street, and then we're looking at the south 10 feet of Lot 5 here. Second Street right away, that's adjacent to the south 10 feet of Lot 5, as well as Lot 6, and then on the same side, the south 10 feet, that's adjacent to Lot 26 and 25. So this stretch of, of Second Street is what we're looking at vacating, and then all of Cherry Avenue as well.
Anyone from CHI want to speak on their project? Open up for public comment. Anyone from the public wish to speak?
A question before we start. When he just said that he gave you an updated something or another, is that in the public packet right here?
Yes, it is.
And what was it again?
The Resolution 2018-44.
Okay.
Anyone from the public wish to speak?
Yes.
I oppose the vacation.
Name and address, please.
Oh, I'm sorry, Robin Hensel, 807 First Street Southeast. I oppose the vacation of the streets and the realignment and the vacation of the public right-of-way for public safety reasons. There's not going to be enough room on the proposed Second Street Southeast and Cherry Streets to ride a bicycle safely. The only sidewalk to enter from First Street and Cherry Avenue side will be, will be 33 feet from the edge of the helicopter landing pad, because the other sidewalk is going. Please consider continuance to ensure all requirements of the CUP, the existing CUP, are met and meet code going forward with this modification. Parking for commercial use should never be allowed in the public right-of-way. It says right here in the staff report, parking in areas that are now considered public right-of-way. This, this is for a commercial purpose, and I think it's wrong to give away public right-of-way for parking purposes for commercial use. St. Gabriel's Hospital is requesting a modification of the existing CUP. Therefore, I request all the findings of fact and conditions of the 2006 CUP be included in the proposed expansion plans for the record. And I would like to remind you that Carl Wagner's made a promise to me that as long as I owned my property, there would only be a green space next to me, that a parking lot would never be put in there. And it's morally wrong for a hospital to break a promise, in my opinion. He's quoted in the paper, having said that, well, I'll read it once again for the public. "We accommodated her request of not putting parking on the south side of this person's property. When the house that is there now is removed, we will leave the trees and make it a green space." So all the conditions that are in the existing.
Time's up, Robin.
CUP need to be included in this, because it's not, you're not deleting any of that.
Anyone else wish to speak? Third and final call, anyone else wish to speak?
I'd like to go again if no one else is going.
Go ahead, have your, another two minutes.
In the code, it states that in making its determination, the City Council shall consider factors related to the intensity of the use, parking needs, level and type of generate, traffic generated, hours of operation, which we still don't know, because it's not in the plan. I asked for it, including loading and unloading times, noise, odor, glare, and other nuisance characteristics, pollution potential, and other factors that may be relevant to making a determination as to whether a particular use of the same general character as a permitted or conditional use. And in the League of Minnesota Cities document, it states that, wait, I have to get the right Part of the reason I ask for a continuance is, this is so that you can get this right, location and size of all required parking spaces, as well as proposed parking lots, is nowhere in this plan. The public, including myself and the people that live on Third Street, have never seen the site plan for the parking lot that now is required, that the planning commission deemed required to go forward with this plan. It's supposed to be in there, but it's not. All the parking plans have to be in there. Elevations, everything as it's going to be, is supposed to be there, but it's not. And I searched diligently for it today, asked if it was at the front counter here, and it wasn't there. And I think it's wrong to go forward with a plan when the neighbors don't even know what that proposed parking lot looks like on the Third Street side.
Anyone else wish to speak? Third and final call, anyone else wish to speak? Hearing none, 7:48, we'll close the public hearing. What is the wish of the council on Resolution 2018-44? Motion for discussion?
I'll make a motion to accept the planning commission recommendation.
I'll second that.
Motion by Councilmember Hanson, second by Mayor Zilka, to approve Resolution 2018-44. Discussion?
Just like Greg, the plans that were just mentioned by Mrs. Hensel, if that's a requirement, shouldn't they be there?
It is, and that's related to one of the items later on, in terms of the planning commission, but in terms of the parking stalls you're referring, that would be a condition of the conditional use permit, that all of the parking would be, would be, would be a requirement, yes. And so I believe it's 136 stalls that they would be required to have for that, for that site. And I know they're looking at, there's a property they own on Third Street that they'd be looking at, including as far as constructing a parking lot over there. We wouldn't necessarily have to see plans in terms of a public hearing or anything like that, because it is less than the 50 parking stalls. When you have 50 parking stalls in a particular parking lot, that, that requires a public hearing for it, much like what Midstate had to have not too long ago. That parking lot would be less than the 50 stalls, so we would need a permit for it, but that's all that we would need, as long as it meets the rest of the city code.
And that's not part of what we have here, anyway. This is just.
This is just to vacate the.
On a second.
That's correct, yeah.
Yeah, in, in fact, Mr. President, I'm going to amend my motion here to, rather than accept the planning commission, which is coming up on this one, would be to accept, adopt Resolution 2018-44.
Okay.
Mr. President?
You amend your second, mayor?
Yes.
Okay. Questions?
I have a question?
Yeah.
So the city owns Cherry Street and Second, Cherry, is it Cherry Avenue, Cherry Street?
Cherry Avenue.
And Second Street. Is it common to just give away city land to a big corporation for them to put a parking lot on it?
We have vacated parts in the, in the past, so Second Street used to run straight north and south. That stretch, I think it was 2004, 2005, when that was vacated for the original hospital expansion, so it's, it's been done in the past, and it, I mean, if it serves a public purpose, then yes, it can be done.
Well, and we've vacated numerous alleys.
True.
Any other discussion?
Mr. President, if I may, if I can ask, Leif, would you include that the, that the hospital dedicate the right-of-way for the alley to the city and the easements of the existing utilities? Is it, is it typed up into the language of your adjusted resolution?
Utility easement retained, yes.
Yep. Yes, so we're good in there.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, resolution, call a roll, please.
Gushak?
Yes.
Lundberg?
No.
Zilka?
Yes.
Hanfler?
Yes.
Ljelgrin?
Yes.
Knopfela?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Hercock?
Yes.
Carries.
Onto lettings, Resolution 2018-45, award bid, Public Improvement 378A, Fifth Avenue Southeast, adopt. Greg?
Yeah, last Tuesday, we opened up bids for the Fifth Avenue Southeast Extension. Received three bids. The low bid came from Larson Excavating out of Holdingford in the amount of $159,710.25. Tonight, we are asking the council to approve that, that project to the low bid, which is Larson Excavating, so that project can move forward this year.
What is the wish of the council on Resolution 2018-45?
I move to award.
Got a motion by Councilmember Lundberg, second by Councilmember Ljelgrin, to approve Resolution 2018-45. Any discussion?
When was that bid put out?
Tuesday, last Tuesday.
It's just, I'm having trouble understanding how that came back so quick, and we tried to get the trail.
The Camper Valley Trail. The trail was a much bigger project, so it was a much, it was a bigger project to fit into a smaller time window. This is a one-block stretch for utility construction. Realistically, it should take two to three weeks. We gave them six weeks to, to get it done, because that's between now and freeze-up, and so there's a little bit more flexibility. It's basically filler work for, for a crew to be able to get in there and get something done before freeze-up. The Camper Valley Trail portion of it, that's going to be, I mean, a two-to-three-month project in order to get that done. Somebody's got to have a crew available to dedicate for that. This late in the season, that size of a project isn't as easy to get, to get bid out as something like this. It deals with the sizing of it.
I'll bring this up later. It doesn't pertain to this issue, so I'm done.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, resolution, call a roll, please.
Lundberg?
Yes.
Zilka?
Yes.
Hanfler?
Yes.
Ljelgrin?
Yes.
Knopfela?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Hercock?
Yes.
Gushak?
Yes.
Carries.
Old business, additional work, shape for construction, Rosenmeyer siding project. Greg?
Yeah, so when we were doing the siding project over at the Rosenmeyer House, where the CVB is currently at, we found some rotten wood behind the siding, as well as rotten sill panels underneath the window that needed to be replaced. All in all, it was about $2,573 worth of work that we had to do. The city ended up paying for the, the building permit, and so that's the difference between the price, which was right, was 198 bucks. So the change order amount is for $2,375, because we paid for the, for the permit app to repair that, that rotten wood on the, on the siding. So tonight, we're asking for the council to approve change order number one.
What is the wish of the council?
Make motion, change number one.
Got a motion by Councilmember Ljelgrin, second by Alderman Hercock, to approve change order number one. Any discussion?
What was the original bid?
$18,500.
So this is falling in that 10 percent, approximately 10 percent that most contractors get for over.
For unknowns, yeah.
Yeah.
So not by my math, but.
Is this something he gives you a heads up on, or?
Yeah, so he, he let me know that the area was rotten, I went.
Upon tear down, hey, come take a look at this while it's apart, type of deal?
Correct.
Okay, well, I feel, I feel better about that, other than, okay, I'm done, going by the way.
Here's another bill, yeah, yep.
Any other discussion?
Yes.
Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Resolution 2018-43, call for reelection, Sales and Use Tax, Community Center Complex Project. John?
This is a second resolution for the, for the project. This is technically what would be used, used for the ballot question. The previous one is, the resolution is intended to be administered to the Legislature Research Department if the, if the referendum were to succeed. So this does meet the timelines, the, the election timeline for this resolution is 74 days, so it, it falls within the, the proper timelines prior to the election, and just covering our bases to make sure that we have everything prepared for this, and if we're successful, that we can move forward to the legislature for that taxing authority.
So does, does this have anything to do with the correction of the ballot question?
This, I will, will correct the.
That'll be amended?
Yeah. Ballot question.
What is the wish of the council on Resolution 2018-43?
Move to adopt with the amendment.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilmember Knopfela, second by Mayor Zilka, to adopt. Any discussion?
Oh, just a point of note here, on the, this is the third vote we're going to take on this, and I asked a procedural question. The first time, is, is this it, or are we moving forward? And then we ended up, and I was told that was it. Now we're going to have a second, you know, making a total of three votes on the, on the one question. Just wanted to point that out, but let's go into the voters.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, resolution, call a roll, please.
Zilka?
Yes.
Hanfler?
Yes.
Ljelgrin?
Yes.
Knopfela?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Hercock?
Yes.
Gushak?
Yes.
Lundberg?
Yes.
Carries.
New business, Civic Legal Services, City Attorney Agreement, Flaherty and Hood, approved. John?
Yes, we have our, after the review from our RFP process and the interview committee, our recommendation is to move forward with Civil Legal Services with the firm of Flaherty and Hood. I feel they are, they were the lowest cost hourly of the RFP respondents, and they have the widest range of expertise among their firm for the service. I think they are going to be, be an excellent fit for our community.
What is the wish of the council?
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilmember Gushak, second by Alderman Hercock, to approve the agreement. Any discussion?
Mr. President, I would just add, for the public, what I said at the work session, that John and I have been fortunate enough to work a lot with Flaherty and Hood through our relationship with the League of Minnesota Cities. Who is a, I'm, yeah, right, whoops, Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities, too many committees. Who is a, I'm, yeah, right, whoops, Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities, too many committees. And they work very diligently for Greater Minnesota, and we're very fortunate to have them on our team, simply because they have expertise in so many areas where we ask for it.
Or needed.
Right.
Any other discussion?
Yes, Mr. President.
Go ahead.
And, Mr. Mayor, I would also like to point out, due to the abnormal high attendance we have this evening, I think it's worth pointing out that the, it was also a very cost-effective option. There's a big push and a desire to do business locally, and it was a far better deal for the residents than a local option.
And can I just mention, Mr. President, that I think it's a great idea that we're hiring a firm that's not from Little Falls, just because there's just so much less opportunity for there to be a conflict of interest. You're not related to anyone in town, are you?
Council President, if I could add to that, their firm is dedicated towards municipal law. That's what they do. That is all that they do. They work for cities. They don't work for businesses. They don't work for individuals. They work for cities. Just, and then, as Eric had mentioned, their, their city attorney folks are separate from their lobbying folks. They don't intermingle, you know, at, at, at that level. They have dedicated staff for lobbying, dedicated staff for, for their municipal service. So, it's, we won't see a suffering of, of service in, during session when, when, when things are busy at the Capitol. But, just for me, when I have to go testify at all the wastewater hearings or daycare hearings.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Recommendation Housing and Redevelopment Authority, Policy 55, housing and redevelopment authority, low-interest apartment loans, accept, approve. Lori?
Yes, we met with the HRA a couple of weeks ago and discussed the HRA's low-interest apartment loan policy. They did have one in place. The last time it was modified was back in 2006. Because the HPC has been very active in, in doing renovations to the downtown area, in the historic area, and the EDA developed a policy to help businesses, not only in the downtown area, but outside of the downtown area, with renovations to their buildings, things to, you know, for upkeep and stuff that might be difficult and don't necessarily show an increase in value based on what they're doing, but there are things that are necessary to be done. Many of the buildings downtown have apartments above them, would provide for another revenue stream to help those building owners keep, maintain, and, and keep their properties in good working order. So, with that, the HRA discussed and amended their policy to be somewhat in line with the HPC and the EDA policies, in that they did the 10% owner equity, and then a 90% low-interest loan, making the loan interest rates comparable to that of the EDA's policy, where the first five years, it's a 1%, and then each year, up to year 10, it increases by 1%. So, year 6 is 2%. They did not opt to go with the deferred loan part of it. They, at this point in time, agreed to do just the low-interest loan part, with a maximum of $60,000, $15,000 per unit, and a maximum of four units.
What's the wish of the council?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion by Alderman Hercock, second by Councilmember Lundberg, to approve the recommendation. Hearing accept. Any discussion?
Mr. President, if I could, Lori, was there a discussion on that deferred loan part? Because with the condition of some of those apartments downstairs, I think it would have been really nice to be able to help in that way, because I know it's been greatly beneficial as far as our EDA loans that we've been doing. So, was that discussed? And I appreciate all the work that they put into that. That's not my point, but I just think that would help our downtown get fixed up even more, especially upstairs apartments.
And they, they did have discussion on that. Frank, you're on that committee. I don't know if you want to add to the comments at all based on discussion, but there, there was discussion about the deferred part, and the committee just opted not to include that as a part of it.
Okay, so they did discuss it.
Yeah, we discussed it, and we're looking at that money. There's only so much there. And it was originally for housing and things like that, and we don't want to deplete what we have, totally. So, the discussion was brought up. Some people thought maybe a deferment, maybe not to that extent, would have been all right, but there was opposition to even that. So, we basically went with the vote.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Recommendations, Planning Commission, CHI St. Gabriel's Hospital, conditional use permit, two-story addition to the hospital, accept, approve. Greg?
Yes, like I mentioned in the work session, we, the CHI is looking at an expansion on their, their property. It's an 18,000-square-foot, two-story addition that they're looking at installing. So, tonight, we are asking the council to approve the recommendation from the Planning Condition, Commission, to grant the conditional use permit for the two-story addition to the hospital. They did have a number of conditions on that, that recommendation. One of them was to build all the parking lots to meet the current zoning requirements, combine all the parcels so that they're all into one, one parcel ID number. As you can see behind me here, there's a number of different parcel numbers for the particular property that they own. And so, we'd be looking at combining all of these parcels into one, putting these here, into one parcel ID number, so that the parking is within the one part, is with that parcel as much as, as practical. They also had to dedicate the right-of-way of the alley before construction on the north side of there, and dedicate the easements through the property for our city utility mains that currently run along Cherry and Second Street. So, that would be included in this as well, if that's the council's wishes.
What is the wish of the council?
I'll make a motion to accept and approve the recommendations from the Planning Commission.
I'll second that.
Got a motion by Councilmember Hansen, second by Mayor Zilka. Discussion?
Like we talked about earlier, I, I think I'd like to see if they couldn't put in the, in the conditional use, that the trees and the shrubs and the stuff would be put in there, so that we're guaranteed that they will be in there, so we don't have that problem, you know, in the future. I don't know what, what the process is that you have to go about to do that, but...
It would simply be a condition that you would add. So, if the, the person that made the motion the second wanted to include that, then that would be added to it as well.
Is this your guys' final landscaping?
At least along the side where there's housing, so it provides a little barrier there.
So, before I amend my motion, then, can the representative from CHI assure me that this is a plan and not just a mock-up? I mean, if you say you're gonna put a tree in this location, are you really planning to put a tree in that location, or is it to make the mock-up look pretty?
I'm Patrick Jirdan, a project architect. What you're seeing is the actual landscape plan. There are some trees that are kind of the lighter green that are existing to remain, so we're not providing those particular trees. But, the dark green trees are all new trees that are being proposed per the landscape plan, yes.
How about the purple bushes?
And the purple bushes.
Just checking.
And there is a fence on each one of those, right? I remember reading like six-foot and...
Yeah, the, if you're familiar with the property, there's an existing six-foot fence on the eastern parcel, but it's, it's got some disrepair, so we're replacing that fence. And then, the one on the western parcel is a brand-new fence, and that was the request for the variance to allow us to do an eight-foot fence versus a six-foot fence, because that was the request of the property owner.
Thank you.
Conditions?
Well, I'll update my motion to include the recommendations from the Planning Commission, and add for the approval is contingent upon the landscaping plans being included as illustrated with the plan.
I would second that.
Any other discussion? Questions? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Rezone to multifamily residential District R3. Greg?
Yeah, so we talked a little bit about this in the, the work session. The Planning Commission had held a public hearing in terms of rezoning of this parcel here where the expansion would be going on. The recommendation from the Planning Commission is to move forward with that rezoning from an R2 to an R3. We would need to do that as a, as an ordinance update, so that's what will, will be coming forward to the, to the council. But, tonight, I would like to, just to basically table that for now, until we get the ordinance written, so that we can get that in place.
What's your counsel?
I make a motion to table.
Second.
Motion made by Councilmember Gushick, second by Councilmember Lundberg, to table. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
Don't we need a date to table something, too?
I didn't say there's no vote on the table.
Just a person, a second?
Just a, just a motion to table.
I don't, I think that's something we need to look into moving forward. I mean, 'cause one person could literally just make a motion to table something in perpetuity.
I believe I looked that up last time that happened and emailed John and Jeremy, but I think we should check into it, because I agree.
Do we have a, table just the next meeting, or?
Yeah.
Table it to the next meeting.
I don't have my pocket version of Robert's Rules.
Utility Service Partners, Inc., marketing agreement. John?
We heard from, in the work session, from Ashley Sworsky from Utility Service Partners. They are a National League of Cities-sponsored program, as well as a League of Minnesota Cities Business Council program. This is a marketing agreement to utilize the city in their marketing campaigns, which are mailing-only to our residents, to offer a, a service line, insurance coverage for, they have three different programs. One for the service lines for water, one for sewer, and then they do have, still have some internal plumbing, plumbing services that they would, they would offer. So, with that marketing agreement, we have, we would receive some revenue based on the number of plans that would be utilized within our, within our city.
What's the wish of the council?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second. Got a motion by Councilmember Gushick, second by Councilmember Liljergren, to approve the marketing agreement. Discussion?
Yes, Mr. President, go ahead.
Sorry.
Go ahead.
Fewer people that have regularly had frozen lines would certainly be a good option for them.
Does this cover tree ruts growing into your pipes? Okay. I'll sign up.
Mr. President, I have all kinds of problems with, with this, starting with the, the marketing utilizing the city logo. To me, that's gonna have the appearance that the program is endorsed by the city, and I don't think we should be endorsing one company that provides this type of coverage. Basically, what it is, is an insurance policy. That's what this is. It isn't a warranty. It's an insurance policy. It's pool to risk. I work in insurance, okay? I know how this works. I don't see why there would be anything preventing the company from marketing their product available to any resident that wants to sign up for it, pay for it, and utilize it. I just don't think we need to be involved.
I agree. I felt like someone was selling me insurance. And there's a lot of language, and I understand that they are endorsed by the League of, League of Cities, but to me, there's a lot of stuff in the language that I'm just not real comfortable with.
So, is this basically like an offer of solicitor's license with the city logo?
Through their, their, and their agreement is they only solicit through mailing. So, this isn't a door-to-door or telemarketed solicitation.
With a franchise-free, franchise fee coming back to us?
Yeah, a license fee that they would agree to pay for.
So, basically, it's like Charter, or any of the other ones, we let?
Utilize our, our public right-of-way and, for their service, and they, and their, charge to them is basically the maintenance and our, of our authority, and allowing authority to use our, our right-of-way. This is our, our revenue is in lieu of them using our, our logo in the distribution, distribution of their marketing materials.
So, now, question probably better off for you is, you know, they said this goes all the way to the main, but when does it become, isn't it at, like, the water main at the shut-off? Isn't that where, in city property? So, is this somewhere that's gonna be on city, and some of it's gonna be on homeowner?
So, for, for the water services at the curb stop, where we can turn the valve on and off, that's where our responsibility ends. For the sewer, it's all the way to the main. The main to the houses, the property owners, we just deal with the main itself. On the water side, we deal with the main and then the service line up to the shut-off, so we can turn that particular property off. The homeowners is from the, the shut-off to the house is their responsibility.
Council President, they, they can address their premium, their coverage for where our responsibility ends, and the private owner's responsibility starts. Is that correct, Ashley?
Yeah. In the agreement currently, it has coverage all the way to the main. That was just, but we can adjust... It's to the curb stop, and that actually lowers the price to $5.75 for the water. So, yeah, we, we'll cover our terms, specifically state we cover whatever the residence responsibility is for those lines. During initial conversations, I thought it was all the way to the main, but we can just update that, and then it's a dollar less for the water line warranty.
Well, and I haven't heard or seen of any local person really marketing anything like this, and this may open up an opportunity for them, because if they can provide that service at a better price, they can cancel after one month and go on with. I think it's, it's going to be a education for our citizens that they have a way to insure themselves on this, that they maybe didn't know it was, because we have been doing a lot of educating of exactly what their responsibility was. And, you know, so I'm excited about that option being out there, and our residents having that opportunity. Would it probably be better if it wasn't with our logo? I don't know. I just think this is what we're offered. Nobody else has offered it, and I agree, we shouldn't be selling the name all the time, but if we're getting a bit of a franchise fee that we could help somebody with, or do whatever we want with it. And I would guess, we're just like these citizens, where at some point, we could discontinue this if we wanted to, if we got too much blowback and it wasn't working. I just think it's the only option we have right now.
I don't, it's not, it's, for, as far as the city goes, Mr. Mayor, it's not, it's, it's not like we have a hole here. I, I, nothing would prevent them from marketing their, their product through mailing, anyway. Why would they need our permission for that? They don't need our permission to offer an aftermarket warranty on a car that you can get, and you hear advertised on the radio. I just really have a problem with attaching our logo. It, it's going to make it look like we endorse this company, and that would be the right perception. I'm not ready to endorse this company. I don't know enough about them.
And it's, I think it's gonna be real confusing for people like my mom, for example, to get a letter in the mail from the city of Little Falls, because that's at the top, theirs is at the bottom. It's still there, but the city of Little Falls is at the top, and she's gonna think that the city of Little Falls is trying to sell her insurance. And that's what it's gonna look like to my mom and a lot of other little old ladies.
Lori, did you have a comment?
The only comment I will make is, we have had, from time to time, residents come So they, we've had them come in from time to time, you know, they ask us about it, and we just, you know, we're not insurance people. We aren't telling them that it's a good deal or a bad deal, but, and I guess that's not here nor there, but just so you know, we have had other companies that have sent mailings out to our local residents, offering the same type of coverage.
So in this whole process, do they, do we, do you have to send it out on city logo?
Our program is only available through some type of municipal partnership. It does, if it was something that would make the city feel better, we can do a cologo, but where both of our logos are on the top. But we would never be able, so kind of to answer both of your questions, yes, there's nothing stopping us from direct mailing to your residents, but we would never be able to offer the most generous coverage that we do for the lowest monthly premium possible, as well as if you really do want to...
Whoa, 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 hold on a sec. How does that make, how?
Because we would not, we wouldn't get the response rates that we do, so...
Okay, so you're, basically, you're counting on having our logo and making it appear like it's a city-endorsed program?
Right, because you'll get a lot more sales if the city's logo is on it.
It is a program that is supported by the city. We enter into an agreement with the city. So that is, the letter does say that the city has partnered with us to make this program available to you. So obviously, yes, we do. It does allow us to get a higher number of enrollments, but that in turn allows us to offer the better coverage, where most of the people that do mass mail to the homeowners have service fees or deductibles, annual and lifetime limits. They don't cover the thawing of frozen water lines, and a lot of times, their coverage stops at the property line, where for the sewer, you need that coverage in the street. So that's kind of the big differences there. And kind of just to your question about car warranties, right now, a resident isn't calling you when they have an issue with their car. So that's kind of why we work with the city, because if they're having an issue with their external lines, they are calling you about that. So that's...
John had something.
Greg?
I was going to repeat what Lori said. In my previous committee, I had members come up to me with that same letter, and, you know, that company never contacted us, never solicited us, and it made it, and the letters made it look very much like the city was sending out that letter. I would say if here, we have an agreement with them, and I'd certainly appreciate to know when they're going to send out a letter that's going to do this, because we're going to get that response. We're going to have questions, like Councilmember Lundberg's mother that is going to ask, what is this? And it's, and we would actually, at this time, have some information to explain what it is and why it might be a benefit to them, and why, and if the council were so choose, approve it, that's, you know, the one group that we have, we have, you know, have an agreement with.
And it's similar to Charter?
It's nothing like Charter.
It isn't, it isn't, no, this is, their agreement is for the use of the marketing. It isn't for the use of the land.
The only benefit we get out of this is we get that 50 cents per month.
Correct.
So our choice is, basically, it is an insurance company. I agree. Do we want the 50 cents per person, or, I mean, per month, or don't we? Which could add up to benefiting in other areas.
Well, if 1,000 people sign up, and they sign up for all three portions of it, that's $1.50 each. And if 1,000 of them, that's $1,500 a month that the city would get.
That'd be $18,000 a year. That'd be a down payment on our poop plant.
It's not even a down payment on the plants.
Any other discussion?
Have we, have we done anything like this before, other than our agreements with Charter? And I know it's not the same thing. I'm just saying, with the franchise fee or anything like that, have we done it with businesses? Have we?
Not that I'm aware of.
We have a new city attorney here. What do you think about this?
Yes, I haven't looked too much into this agreement yet, so I'd have to spend some more time reading into it and looking into how other cities have benefited or what issues they've had to fully answer that.
So is this something maybe we should table a decision on and let our attorney take a look at it, see if there's anything we should be watching out for here? Or do you just feel comfortable to go ahead and vote on it the way it is?
You know, nationwide, they only have 500 municipal partnerships, nationwide. 500. That's not very many.
Well, we have a motion on the floor. Further discussion? All in favor? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion fails.
For the record, can I please have the nay votes? Raquel, Wayne?
That's only three.
No, me.
Four.
You, Jeremy? Okay.
So when they freeze up this winter?
Call Greg.
I get the calls.
A constituent got ahold of me, and this probably doesn't fall in our hands, anyway, but Our Lady of Lord's School has a lot of kids that play there in the summertime, and they've been really good about letting community members come in there. Where the issue is, is there are no bathrooms. And little kids have to use facilities once in a while, so there's been a few neighboring bushes that have been...
Watered?
Watered. And I got a request, if the city, is there a possibility we could put a bathroom there, being it's mainly city people using it? Or is that something we don't even deal with because it's private property? So I just said I'd bring it up. There is a need, but...
Think you could pass the request on to the church and the school? I don't know if we want to start putting...
Because what, we're going to put a porta potty? I would think for the summer.
Maybe the person that had a concern, he didn't even ask the school.
Right.
Yeah, it's a matter of pointing within whose purgance it is first.
I agree, or else we'd have to enter into agreements with private sectors on land usage and everything, and that could get a little hairy over even a little thing like a bathroom, but...
We got parks of our own that could use porta-potties that we don't supply in the summertime.
Anyway, I brought it up.
Mr. President, I missed the opportunity to thank the chief and our police department for all the work we do, they do. I think we have a great police department. I see things on Facebook with them stopping little kids and giving them those Dairy Queen certificates, and they have had the videos of them, and I think we have another great addition to our school liaison officer, does a great job, hearing a lot of good about them. So thanks, chief, and pass it on to your staff. I'm proud of the police department we have in Little Falls.
And I'm glad you said something about that 48%, where you take care of the crimes, only 48%, because last year, I think, it was closer to 80%?
It was, yeah.
And I use that. A lot of people say, well, there's a lot of meth use in Little Falls. We see it in the paper all the time, and I tell them, that's because we solve 80% of the crimes, so you're going to see that. I said there was other communities that had a 28% where they solved. I says, you don't see hardly anything about meth in them communities. Apparently, they're not doing anything about it. So when you mentioned that 48% was just a glitch...
I would comfortably say it's in the high 60s to 70s, but I just don't have the data to back it.
Okay.
Next year.
Next year. I'll make up for it next year.
Add this year's and next year's?
We'll get 110.
Any other reports? Announcements? Hearing none, we will adjourn.